Ready to the July eighth River Falls City Council meeting, first thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Amy, can I have roll call please?
Bjork.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Carol.
Here.
Downey.
Here.
Morset.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Paige.
Here.
Okay, next our approval of minutes from the June twenty-fourth meeting.
I move approval.
Second. Uh, first and second on minutes, uh, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, next we have approval of the bills with Mr. Uh, Page.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the bills in the amount of one million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-two cents, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
First and second on bills, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next go on to public comments, if there's anybody in the audience has anything like to say, now would be the time, come on up. Uh, I believe John told you to sign in. So, everybody's got two minutes like always, so come on up.
Hi, I'm Nancy Reich, my husband and I live at thirteen oh six Roosevelt Street, the east entrance to De Sanctus Park. My first concern is why you would choose De Sanctus Park for the Grow to Share Gardens? Why does it have to move? Are there any other options that wouldn't affect homes and homeowners? Where would the money be coming from? We were told last year the reason that they mowed the land behind our home only two or three times a year was because they were trying to save money. Um, our home is affected the most. Parking lot would be right outside, right outside our bedroom window. The property value is sure to go down. gravel would be unacceptable, it's too noisy, dirty, dusty. And we're wondering would there be lights in the parking lot? And, um, also where would the road be placed? It doesn't look like there's a lot of space between, um, the paved entrance that is used just by bikers and walkers right now. Is there enough space for the road? And I hope this is not already a done deal. I'd like you to just listen to what we all have to say and please consider other options. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else?
Hi there. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mike Woolsey, I'm a former president of Grow to Share, and I'm here to speak in support of approving item three under the consent agenda. For over a decade, Grow to Share has helped people grow food for their families and local food shelves, so support, supporting sustainability, community and food security. Years ago, city planning anticipated Grow to Share would move out of Hoffman Park with De Sanctus, with De Sanctus Park talked about as the best future location. The legacy of De Sanctus Park is oriented towards the pastoral. The community garden, uh, a community gardening activity is a natural fit versus tennis courts or ball fields, which are not acceptable in that space. Just west of the park, the FFA already engages in agricultural programming and is eager to partner with Grow to Share. During the growing season, which lasts less than six months, you might see a dozen volunteers on a Saturday morning tending food shelf plots. At other times, just a few people may be quietly working in their own garden spaces. Occasionally, educational events will draw small attendance. For much of any given day, the, the garden is without visitors. The infrastructure is simple and is at residential scale. Also, Grow to Share works closely with the city to properly manage garden waste. Together, the FFA, Grow to Share and the presence of the historic schoolhouse create a neighborhood space that is in the spirit of River Falls' agricultural and pastor, pastoral heritage. Please help Grow to Share to continue its valued work by voting in favor of the lease, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gary Meyer and I'm opposed to the Grow to Share being put in De Sanctus Park. First of all, even in your plan for this, you're already talking about putting in, um, um, a greenhouse. So, in your plan, you say that you're gonna have a spigot for the, um, people to water their stuff with. Uh, greenhouse requires more water, electricity, probably sewer and the parking lot at some point. We have, uh, eighty or sixty homes back in this area, which only has one entrance and one exit. And, uh, parking lot back there would be terrible with all the young children we have around. Grow to Share also has equipment rental, which I don't know where they would keep. I think there's too many things that are unknown to, uh, agree with this and I think it should be tabled until we can look at it more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Matthew Utes again, five thirty-three Marcella Court, and again, I am totally opposed to Grow to Share moving over there. I don't mind Grow to Share, I think it's a good program. Just moving it from again, a non-residential area into a residential area with literally every neighboring house has a dog. And I mean, they bark at people if the, if it's gonna be out of the park and people being in that area. I think it will greatly affect our property values, uh, I don't see why, why it hasn't. Um, I took pictures of currently where it's at and the buildings to me look disheveled. Um, and I surely, I don't want that in my backyard. And I, I know I can't tell you what to do with the park, but it does, again, affect the value. And I know we haven't mowed that area of the park, and again, I'm big on, I don't know why we haven't mowed it, but I would urge you to vote against this, table it, and as Gary said earlier, we can for further discussion. Thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is Mike Reich, I'm husband to Nancy who spoke earlier. Um, I'd like to do sort of a two-part presentation here, first of all, um, I really think the property values are something to be considered here. My house is located right at the intersection of, right at the end of Roosevelt Street. So, we're talking about in my property, I'd use the whole southern view of the lot and I'd use the whole western view of the park. I'm the only house on there that has that much exposure. Put a parking lot, uh, on, on the west side, a shelter on the west side, other things there that certainly interfere with the views and use of the park. Um, I, I believe that our land accrues value just because there's a park there. Just like a lake cabin, a cruise cabin, just because you can swim, fish, hike or whatever, your value of property still accrues because of what you're there. I think that, uh, the value that probably would decrease, uh, having a parking lot next to my house, having the backwood sealed off, even with bushes or a blind, it just locks you in. On the other hand, I wanted to say, I've been here defending De Sanctus Park for years, we love the park. We walk the park once, twice a day, sometimes bike it and walk it twice. We enjoy the wildflowers, we enjoy being there. We were there when the sanctuses started the park, we were there when we helped the, the, uh, Air Force people come in and moved all the dirt out of the hole, out of the pond to make a hill in the park, we fed them lunch in our garage. We've looked for lost children in the cornfield a long time ago, I've been there forty years on that particular lot and, uh, I would sort of defend it, uh, the best I can. I guess, the, the, when the park was first done, it was told to have no really organized activity, not tennis handball, you know, pickleball and all that sort of thing. And, uh, uh, what more use or structured use can you have if you rent plots? Rent water, you assign parts, people to plots. Uh, it seems to me that it goes against the general rule of the plan, all that stuff is infrastructure.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Hello, my name is Alex Calero, I live at two, two-three Foster Street, apartment three E. Um, and, uh, I'm here to, um, be in favor of Grow to Share, uh, move to De Sanctus. Uh, I've been with Grow to Share for a couple of years now, I'm currently the, uh, board president. Um, just wanna talk about my experience, um, I'm relatively new to the area. Um, so, I do, I do hear, um, folks who have been here for, for years, generations, um, their concerns with it. Um, my personal experience, I live in an apartment and, um, I, I'm very grateful for growing, Grow to Share to give me the opportunity to, to grow fresh produce, food. Um, like I said, I'm new to the area, so I was able to meet a lot of people through Grow to Share, um, make new, um, connections. And, um, yeah, the mission of Grow to Share is to have a sustainable garden with volunteers, to educate the community. I know we give thousands of food for free to, to the community. We also provide hundreds of hours of, um, volunteer and education to children, adults. Um, you know, I take my, my three-year-old there and she loves it, loves to eat the fresh food there, so, um, yeah, I, I, um, personally, I've been around community gardens, um, since I was in college, you know, they've had a positive impact on me. Um, they've, uh, allowed me to eat fresh produce and, and, and build relationships. I know that we've also been working with the city pretty closely to, um, you know, for, for your, for a couple of years at least, um, to, to find the best location, so, so this was an iterative part process, to my understanding. Um, Grow to Share doesn't, you know, originally doesn't wanna, wanna move, who wants to move, right? It's, it's a big hassle, but we realized that, uh, that it'd be more sustainable long-term and allow us to, uh, bring community together. Um, and I think it's, um, today's day and age, uh, gardens and community spaces are essential for mental health, for, uh, relationships and, um, yeah, for, uh, food security, so, um, thank you for your time.
Uh, Benjamin Fox, uh, F O C H S, twenty-five, twenty-nine Powell Avenue, P O W E L L. It's always interesting how you can make people feel small and that your name sometimes doesn't matter in the south. As I look at the minutes, I've been here for almost a decade, you still can't get my name right. So, it's also something you just always beware of in you, and I take that as a reminder that maybe sometimes I need to be a little more humble. When I look at Grow to Share, I'm a little concerned about a twenty-year lease with a private nonprofit partnering with a public utility. If it was a private lease between me and them, we have ability to have discussions about maintenance, other things like that. I find the, where they have it is very disheveled and it's been hard for them over these years because they didn't know when they were gonna move. I think that moving to a new space will give them new life. But I also am concerned that they may drag remnants of that old life into the new one, dragging broken equipment, broken things into that, that they've now added to things, so. And I'll, I'll leave it at that, I mean, I do like their mission, I'm not a fan of new space, but I think that as a regional park, which is, as you said eight years ago, that De Sanctus should be a regional park. That means available to people outside neighborhood, you know, Troy, River Falls, any of the other townships because it's a regional park of everything Glen and Hoffman, with that, thank you.
Hi, Melissa Abduch at eight fifty-nine Brentwood Circle. Um, I am here to speak in support of having Grow to Share at De Sanctus. I currently sit on the Parks and Rec Board, um, and also the B-City Committee and we spoke extensively with Grow to Share and a lot of the concerns that have been addressed here tonight um, for the community, not only that lives surrounding De Sanctus, um, but at whole in River Falls. And I still feel it'll be a very good fit, especially being a B-City, um, park, designated park. And they do definitely mesh very well with our goal as a B-City Committee, so I'm just here to speak in support of, um, council's approval to have Grow to Share at De Sanctus, thank you.
Good evening, Dana Lynn Scott, River Falls Alliance for the Homeless. Uh, last time I appeared before you, I explained that, um, the, the alliance, which is over four hundred volunteers strong, tries to step in to help people in distress, residents of River Falls, that, um, the only other resource available, our neighbor's place, cannot help. Uh, despite this, um, Chief Young has refused to put us on the packet of resources that is handed to homeless people in River Falls looking for help. You might wanna know how that happened. It used to be that there was a, a law, an anti-camping law, that River Falls Public Safety Officers enforced. Except upon looking into it, there was no law, it was an unwritten policy. When I brought this to the attention of the Public Safety Officers I was working with, helping the homeless, um, they realized that if they enforce something that was other than the law, it would negate their protection from qualified immunity. We spoke about that, they took it up the chain of command and shortly thereafter, they stopped enforcing a law that did not exist in River Falls, which is when the ordinance that you passed, that the anti-camping, uh, ordinance that you passed was brought to you. It's not nearly as draconian as the policy was. Um, but it did cause problems for the mayor and it did cause problems for Chief Young.
Fifteen seconds.
It's unprofessional and cruel to deny homeless residents all of the resources that are available to them in the city. And that's on the mayor's shoulders, Chief Young's just following orders. You need to do something to change that.
Anybody else have anything? Hold up.
Hi, Petra Gunther Johnson, three zero five East Division Street. I'm here regarding and in support of the new lease for Grow to Share. Uh, Grow to Share's mission is to facilitate a volunteer-based collaborative garden, support experiential learning, foster healthy and sustainable community and share the harvest. Our vision is to cultivate healthy, sustainable lifestyles in collaboration with local organizations. Efforts include increasing access to fresh, sustainably grown produce, full circle donation and volunteer opportunities, and hands-on environmental and sustainability education. Our motto, growing community, weeding out hunger. This is a statement from Tanya Schmidt, who can't be here tonight because she's teaching class at the gardens. As Executive Director of Grow to Share, I am excited about signing of this new lease. As an organization, we look forward to continuing our partnership with the city. Although the process of moving to De Sanctus will be challenging, I mean, who really enjoys moving? This move will allow us to expand our mission and vision. We anticipate increased educational programming offered on a year-round basis. We are also excited to be integrated into the surrounding community. We are an inclusive organization and continually strive to create peace, inclusivity and accessibility. That's what growing community, weeding out hunger is all about. We will work with the city in the long term to increase sustainability. We also plan to add a high tunnel and/or greenhouse that will further extend the mission, vision and model. We will need lots of volunteers, monetary and plant donations to pull this off. And everyone here tonight is invited to help out with that. Um, we thank you for your time and support for this new lease, which will grant Grow to Share twenty years of location stability. Thank you.
Good evening, Rhonda Clink, uh, five eleven East Johnson Street. I'm here to talk about fireworks. Um, I did see one posting about fireworks, uh, on the RFPD site, um, Facebook page. Permit required, it's illegal, it's unsafe. Um, and that was, I think, the day of or shortly before July fourth. Uh, I think that there could be a lot more proactivity and education for people, like stating who it harms, why is it illegal, that sort of thing. Um, if only all these overly patriotic citizens could comprehend and care that their fireworks activities very negatively affect and harm others who have suffered trauma, have PTSD, and it causes trauma to most animals. Due to it being an illegal activity in all city limits, many citizens do not appreciate the police turning a deaf ear, even on the Fourth of July, let alone every other day that patriots decide to blast loud projectile fireworks. And it's extra loud, this year it seemed extra loud, I don't know if there were extra, you know, that many more people doing it or what, but I know that we have a lot more housing and the structures in close proximity then create the echoing and reverberation effect. Many veterans, whom most people thank for their service, and other trauma sufferers do not favor the sound of fireworks. They even live in certain cities and states around the US because fireworks are illegal there. So, they figure they're safe, they're protected from the blast. Yet here we are, July twenty twenty-five, and in the city limits of River Falls, where such firework activity is illegal, it at least minimally requires a permit, it goes on and on. I'd like to know how many permits were issued each day and night of July thus far? How many citations were issued for those who didn't have permits? I wonder what the horses in the university horse barn experience? Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Move on, uh, we're gonna close the council hearing, in open public hearing on the second reading and disposition for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero four. Second reading and disposition for ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero four. This is annexation of property at Powell Avenue near North Winter Street, and application of a future land use classification of medium density residential and a zoning classification of R two multiple-family medium-density residence, district to the subject property. Is there anybody in the audience has anything like to say? Come on up.
Benjamin Fox, F O C H S, twenty-five, twenty-nine Powell Avenue, P O W E L L. Um, I wanna repeat my concern about the north end of Powell there. At the planning commission, they just approved the final plat for that, recommended to the council, and there was no consideration for pedestrian or bicycle crossing on the north side of Powell. That is a significant thing, um, they wanna put a lighted path across from where the cul-de-sac will be. I don't think that's, when, if you're looking at human-centered development, I don't think that's a great place to put it, considering that all the amenities on the north side of Powell from Oak Ridge into the city are on the north side. So, at some point, you have to cross Powell at a safe distance from something else, so, that's my concern about that. I bike that nearly every day right now, so, with that, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Uh, anybody else have anything on this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and open up a council hearing, and I will take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we, um, we adopt ordinance twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five oh four, annexation of property on Powell Avenue near Winter Street.
Second.
Okay, first and second, questions, comments? None, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we move on to consent agenda. Uh, first thing is a resolution approving new lease agreement with Grow to Share for community gardens at De Sanctus Park. And next thing is a resolution establishing a safe streets for all passports. Does anybody wanna poll anything? Okay, I'll take a motion on this.
I'd like to move for the approval of consent agenda items three and four.
Second.
First and second on conjenta, consent agenda items three and four, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to comptroller's report.
Okay. Here's the comptroller's report for June twenty twenty-five. General fund revenues through the end of June were five million, eight hundred and three thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars, or forty-three point four percent of total budgeted revenues for the year. Revenues in June include thirteen thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars for liquor and malt beverage licenses, nine thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars for building permits, and five thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars for swimming pool fees. Expenditures through the end of June were five million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, or forty-two point eight percent of total budget expenditures for the year. So, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, net revenues over expenditures were seventy-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, next is administrator's report, Scott, if you've got anything for us, or anybody's got anything for Scott?
I do have a few things to pass along to the council. I appreciate the community's patience as we've adjusted staffing for this busy week of River Falls days. Um, nearly all of our public work staff, including seasonals, are engaged in the preparation for, for the event, so it makes it, we, we still are responding, we still are cleaning bathrooms, we're still, um, getting areas done, but, but, um, I think the council understands, but we appreciate the, the community's patience as we're kinda all in on River Falls days here for a full week, um, in advance. Uh, as I did, uh, residents of River Falls will receive their assessment notice. This is a notice of assessment, um, that all properties will receive, this is a revale year. Um, or it's not called a revale anymore, do you remember the new name the state is having us call it? But interim market update, um, so, it's basically adjusting all the properties in the community to a hundred percent of fair market value, um, an estimate on January first, twenty twenty-five. Um, on the back of the notice is several ways for you to contact, um, the city. We can help you, the assessor can help you, you have several informal and formal ways, um, to discuss your property. Um, essentially, the easiest thing for people to do in Wisconsin is to look at the value that's placed for twenty twenty-five. Um, and if you understand that value to be accurate within plus or minus ten percent of what you think the property was sold for on January first, twenty-five, then the assessor's done their job. If you have a concern about that value, you think it's too high, we don't get a lot of people that call us and say it's too low. Um, but if, either way, if you think it's too high or too low, it doesn't reflect the market value of your property, then you have several opportunities to reach out. And again, you can do that through the assessing, um, um, assessing company that does it, the third-party assessor. You may also contact City Hall and we'll help you, um, in any way we can to make sure that you get, uh, the information you need to make a decision about, um, whether you think that there's a, um, something that needs to be done with your assessment.
Scott, did you, excuse me for interrupting, but, um, I live in St. Craig County and I haven't seen mine yet.
Um, they're, they're batch mailed out, so, I mean, they're all, I just received mine yesterday, so I don't know whatever. Did you receive yours? And you are in St. Craig County.
Okay.
I'm in Pierce.
Okay, alright, so I'll just be.
You know, I probably had to go to Detroit and then come back here and get sorted. So, I think, um, people should see them this week, I would be surprised if you don't get an assessment notice this week.
Okay.
And if you're itching to get one. And if you're itching to get one and you didn't, you can also call, you can also call City Hall, and we have a way to kinda look that up for you. Because again, all of these are public, so everyone's assessment is public and available. So, waste management, garbage, we were approached by Waste Management about thirty days ago, I think, give or take a week, and they said, "We're changing your garbage day to Friday." And we said, "No, you're not changing our day to Friday." We have a contract with Waste Management, we have the right to reasonably restrict the days, reset the days of collection. We asserted our rights and said, "Why don't you try that again? Can you help us understand why you need to change the day, why you picked Friday?" So, they went through with our utility director, Kevin Westhouse, and kinda went through, they're basically trying to change all the communities in the area to a single-day pickup. That doesn't mean a truck, that means all of their trucks are in a community for that day, Hudson, Richmond, River Falls, because they think it's better for them to have accountability with their crews. They have to get all the pickups done before any of them are done. We still objected to the Friday because we thought that could lead to problems carrying into the weekend and not getting people back to take care of the problems, and so we settled on Thursday. And then we also told them, "You can't do it right away, we need time to notify the customers that there's gonna be a change." So, the week of July 21st, which will be July 24th, they go to single-day collection. We think it's worth a try. We've had generally good service with the Waste Management crews, and so, and we have, we're in contract through the end of this year, so we thought it was reasonable for us to try that. We understand it's an inconvenience to two-thirds of the households in the community because they have to modify their routines. If it happens to July 21st, if you put it out on Tuesday or Wednesday by mistake, you can just leave it there and they'll get it on Thursday. So, that's another reason why we didn't want them to switch, we didn't want them to switch to Monday and have people. So, what we're trying to do for is switch the least amount of interruption possible. I'm familiar with this from my peers, that the one day a week seems to help with some consistency in the contractors, but we'll still, there will still be houses missed, there'll still be cans that gets crushed. Those are things that happen when you're picking up 6,000 households at a time, and we continue to try to hold them accountable for that. And again, if you can't get satisfaction with Waste Management through their 800 or through their online, you can always call City Hall, and we'll try to help you with that. Those are the three main things I wanted to cover. So, we hope people get a chance to enjoy River Falls days, we're keeping our fingers crossed for the rain on Friday for the parade, so we'll see how that goes. But rain or shine, they say we'll go unless there's a lightning storm, so.
Thanks, Scott. Anybody have anything? Okay, I do have one good news article. Next Thursday is our, which would be July 17th, is our second conversations of the summer. Please join myself and city council members next Thursday from 6:00 to 7:30 at Hoffman Park. There'll be free food and great conversation with fellow community members. And also, that same, at De Sanctus Park that same day at 5:00, the Fire Department is hosting its Fire Truck Water Fun Event. So, you can do that first, bring kids to that, and then come out over and talk with us and have a hot dog, some ice cream. So, hope to see everybody there. Move to adjourn.
Second.
First and second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.